Okay, hello everyone and thank you for joining us for the second Kitata County Chamber of Commerce Candidate Forum for the 2020 primary elections. My name is Paul Jewell and I'm today's moderator. I'd like to thank all the candidates running for District One and District Two County Commissioner and for PUD Commissioner for joining us this evening. The Kitata County Chamber of Commerce would also like to thank the Central Washington Home Builders Association and the Kitata County Association of Realtors for sponsoring this forum. The time limits tonight will be the same as last time. We'll have two-minute opening statements from each candidate. Each candidate will then be provided two minutes to answer any questions that are posed. And if a candidate would like to rebut a particular answer, they can have one 30-second rebuttal per question. We will also conclude after the questions with a 90-second closing statement from each candidate. Gemma, with the chamber, will be keeping time for each candidate by holding up signs for 30 seconds left and when your time is up. Emily will be filtering additional questions from the Facebook and Zoom comments to see if there are any audience questions out there that we might be able to present. When Gemma tells you that your time is up, we ask that you don't necessarily need to cut yourself off immediately at that point, but please follow or please finish your thought in five seconds or less if possible. We do have a list of questions prepared for each group of candidates tonight, which none of the candidates have previously seen. Finally, we do ask that each candidate and the audience please be courteous and respectful to one another. Now, tonight, we're going to do it a little bit differently than we did in our previous forum. We're going to go ahead and take the candidates by groups. So we will be addressing all of the questions, opening statements, and closing statements to each candidate group before moving on to the next group. Each candidate group will be given approximately 30 minutes for questions and they'll have additional time for opening statements and closing statements. With that, we're going to go ahead and begin with our PUD Commissioner candidates and then we'll move on to Commissioner District One and County Commissioner District Two. Good, good, good evening, gentlemen. We have decided that we're going to go in order this evening and we're going to start with Mr. Henderson. Mr. Henderson, you have two minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you, Paul. I'd like to start by saying that electricity is essential. Our lives cannot function without it. It is the great essential that surrounds us at all times. You know, the thing is, most of the time, people kind of forget about that, but the PUD's job is to ensure that it's there, that it's dependable, that it's safe, reliable, and it's presented at a reasonable cost. There's also a customer service element because the people are our customers. And we have to meet their needs and expectations. I'd like to say that I think my work history as a manager and as a public service volunteer aids in my ability to quickly and effectively get into the commissioner duties. Along with that, it's important to maintain, and I plan to, that's one of my goals, maintain reliability, cost effectiveness. And maintenance is my true background, so maintain and improve the infrastructure will be focal points now and in the future. What I really like to say is I want to make sure that our essential power needs are really remain the forgotten and afterthought as we progress into the future. Thank you.
I was the first one to talk without unmuting myself. Thank you, Mr. Henderson. I appreciate that. Next, we'll have Mr. Ron Mitchell.
Good evening. Thank you, Paul. My name is Ron Mitchell and I'm a lifelong resident of Ellensburg, Kitata County, and a graduate of Ellensburg High School. And I have a degree from Central Washington University in aerospace science with a minor in business management. I'm also a chief pilot for Lakeside Industries and asphalt paving business in Issaquah, and I've owned and operated my own company Midstate Aviation since 1980. Married to my wife Sonia for 29 years. I have two children and two grandchildren, so I'm vested in this community. You have a choice between five gentlemen running for this position, and I think they're all well-qualified. In their own right, my job is to convince the voters that I am the best qualified. Public utility districts were authorized under RCW 54 in Washington State in 1934 for to provide economical power to rural areas for agricultural development and commercial industry. As a farmer/ rancher of 260 acres, I am a consumer of PUD power. And actually, the largest consumers of Kitata's PUD electricity are also involved in agriculture. The rural nature of Kitata's PUD makes delivery of so-called cheap power prohibitive. Kitata's PUD maintains over 700 miles of lines with only 4,600 customers. Compare that to the more than 115,000 customers in Chelan, Douglas, and Grant Counties. And add to that that those three counties access inexpensive power generated by dams, either owned by those county PUDs or leased from the federal government. And you can see the difficulty in competing on an equal platform. One of the candidates tells you that he can lower your costs as a consumer by accessing Rock Island Dam power. It seems unlikely to me that Kitata's PUD could go up against a much larger PUD that has invested more than $200 million in dams and has committed to future investments of more than $600 million for the Rock Island Dam. Our top priority should be provided to afford affordable power and dependable service, and I can help make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Next up, we have Mr. Rick Catlin.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Rick Catlin and I'm running for PUD Commissioner, District One. I've been an electrician since 1983 in the Valley. And in 1984, I started my business with my wife Tara doing electrical contracting. We operated that business with several full-time employees till 2016, when we sold it to our sons. I've worked with all three electrical utility companies in the Valley on behalf of homeowners, farmers, ranchers, and businesses, helping them determine their power needs and working with the utility company to fulfill those needs for the customer satisfaction. I'm also a PUD customer. I've seen both the strong points and the things I think can be improved upon as I've worked with various utility companies. I look forward to putting my expertise to work with Kitata County PUD as Commissioner of District One. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Catlin. Next, we have Mr. Patrick Kelleher.
Thank you, Paul. The reason I'm running for PUD Commissioner is to bring lower rates to Kitata County, all Kitata County. The only way to do that is to compete for a FERC hydroelectric project. For the past 19 years, I participated in the FERC process to license both Wanapum and Priest Rapids Dam. 14 years ago, Kitata County Commissioner David Bowen testified to FERC as to the high recreational need to dredge the Vantage Boat Ramp. I watched FERC as they took notes. 14 years ago, FERC issued the license for the Priest Rapids Project and ordered the Vantage Boat Ramp dredged. Commissioner Bowen was speaking for the 40,000 people of Kitata County and FERC listened. As your PUD Commissioner, I want to speak for the 40,000 people of Kitata County and compete for the dam license at FERC. Every 50 years, a FERC license is put up for renewal for competition. In 2001, Wanapum, Priest Rapids, and Rocky Reach were put up for competition. We did not compete. In 2007, Wells Dam was put up for competition. We did not compete. In 2023, the Rock Island Dam will be put up for competition, and we can compete. The Yakima Nation competed for the Priest Rapids Dam. We can compete for the Rock Island Dam. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelleher. Finally, our last candidate tonight is Mr. Tom Morris.
I did it too, Paul. Thank you, Paul, and the staff of Kitata County Chamber. My name is Tom Morris and I'm running for PUD Commissioner, Position One. I graduated from Ellensburg High School in 1982. After high school, I attended J.M. Perry Technical Institute, where I earned a degree in collision repair. In 1984, I married my wife Sandy, who I met in high school. We graduated the same year. We began our married life in Hood River, Oregon, where I worked as a collision repair technician and Sandy worked in banking. We moved to the Puget Sound area in 1985, and I was offered a job at a startup shop just north of Seattle. I continued my education at Everett Community College with an emphasis on public speaking and interpersonal communications. I then took a position at Boeing and became a quality improvement coordinator and a statistical analyst. We started our family in 1990 with our first son, and in 1991, decided to move back and make Ellensburg our permanent home. I worked at Alderman Chevrolet at the time, and Sandy worked at Hubert Farm and Lawn. In 1997, we purchased our business, which we still own and operate today with our two eldest sons. We have been blessed with four wonderful young men as sons and are lucky to be able to have them all living close by in Ellensburg. Through the years raising our family in the Kitata Valley, I've enjoyed working with many different people on community-based programs through U-Sports, Kitata County Chamber of Commerce, 4H and FFA, charitable organizations such as Ellensburg Morning Rotary. I have had the opportunity to lead many volunteers and organizations, as well as being a volunteer and team member myself. With our sons working in the business, I have more free time now, and I'm looking forward to the challenge of becoming your PUD Commissioner and utilize my years of working with people to serve Kitata County residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris, and thank you to all the candidates for your opening statements. We'll now move to the questions portion of our forum tonight. We're going to go ahead and start again with Mr. Henderson. We'll go in the same order, then the next question will go to Mr. Mitchell first, and then the next question will go to Mr. Catlin first, and so on and so on. So, Mr. Henderson, again, we'll start with you. The first question. The office of PUD Commissioner is for a six-year term. Therefore, electing a PUD Commissioner is a fairly long-term decision by constituents. Tell us why you should be elected rather than your fellow candidates.
Well, one, I'm retired, so I have time. But that aside, you know, I have I have a commitment to public service and have been doing that for over 20 years. The last eight years with the Department of Health and the Dental Quality Assurance Commission. I've been actively involved in commissions and boards with them, like I said, for 20-plus years. Additionally, my previous employer, Washington State Department of Transportation, I was maintenance manager there. I ran a multimillion-dollar budget, up to 50 employees. I'm well-versed in government spending, budgeting, all the associated contracting, so that is a very easy adjustment for me. I feel very strongly that this position needs strong representation. I feel like I bring those qualities there. And I believe that, God willing, I'm going to be around for six years and intend to give it my full effort and focus. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Mr. Mitchell?
Unlike Jim, I am not retired, and I work as a full-time corporate pilot for a company out of Issaquah, also farm and ranch. And I think one of the best compliments I had was when somebody nominated me for the rodeo board 25 years ago. And I said, "Well, I've got two small kids and I'm working three jobs," and they said, "That's exactly who we want to be on this board, is somebody that can multitask and does a good job at everything they do at the same time." So I am 67 years old, probably the oldest of any of the candidates, and I hope I've got six years left, but I know I have the energy at this time. The reason I think I'm the best person for this position is I have a lifelong history of being involved in boards. I've been on the rodeo board for 21 years. I was on the Washington Aviation Association Board for 23 years. During that time, we started the largest trade show in the Northwest for aviation. We get about 30,000 to 40,000 people a year at the fairgrounds now. I've been a drug and alcohol consortium manager. I've been on the advisory board for the airport, and currently, I'm on the Own You Trust Advisory Board and President. Most of the boards, I was on the chamber board for several years, and most of the boards I've been associated with, I gravitate towards treasure. I think I have a really good grasp on money and how to handle money, how to make money, and how to conserve money. Do the best thing you can with the assets you have. That would be my answer.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Catlin?
Well, I love the Valley and love my electrical work I've done here and been very interested in it. My wife and I, when we started our business, we started it from scratch and grew it into a fairly decent business, so I know a budget. I know the utility companies because I've worked with them for 30-some-odd years. And we're lifelong in the Valley, and three of our children and six of our grandchildren live in the Valley, so I like it. I think I could, my expertise on the electrical side of it and being a small business, I think I would be very good fit for PUD Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Catlin. Next up is Mr. Kelleher.
Thank you, Paul. I participated in the relicensing of the Priest Rapids Project for 19 years. This is my third run for PUD Commissioner, so the short six-year term does not bother me. What I think I can bring to the job is expertise in the FERC process, which is critical if you're going to go after a dam. But one of the other things that I think I can bring and will be essential in completing that task is the collaboration between the three commissioners. The three commissioners, you can't pick up the phone and talk to each other. All your communications have got to be in open public meetings. So that means to share information, you need to talk about it in the public, and that's what I think I'll be doing the first year is listening to what they have to say on how they've successfully run the PUD and share with them strategies, techniques, and how we can compete for the Rock Island Dam. Going for the Rock Island Dam, it doesn't matter how I vote. We need a 3-0 vote. We need to be together on it. Everybody at the PUD has got to go in on it. And I view it as my job, my responsibility, if elected, to educate the people involved on a strategy that can win, and we can win. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelleher. Mr. Morris?
I'm back. Remembered to unmute. First of all, your question of convince the people why you're the best candidate. We're very fortunate in this county to have the men that are sitting in this discussion right now to be running for this position. Kitata County residents would be good and be blessed to have any one of these four other gentlemen. I can't say that I'm going to be know-all and do-all in this position. I believe I bring my years of team building, of bringing people together to serve a goal, to serve together, to meet the common goal, meet the goals that we've set forward. I believe that's my strengths. I, like Mr. Mitchell, have been involved in many boards. I've been the Kitata County Chamber President. I've been on many youth sports programs. I was a founding member of Ellensburg Morning Rotary. I've traveled abroad doing medical missions for Rotary and other organizations. And I believe that I bring the fiscally responsibility of being able to go through the budgets, to be able to analyze those with my background as a statistical analyst, and my quality improvement background to be able to help the organization be the best organization it can be and work together as a team to come together to reach our goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Let's move on to our next question. Gentlemen, this is for an open seat. There's not an incumbent in the race. If elected, what three goals would you like Kitata's PUD to accomplish in the first year of your first term? Mr. Mitchell, you'll go first this time.
Okay, three goals. Very good. Well, just like any of the gentlemen here, there would be a learning curve, obviously, to start out with. I know a little bit about the PUD and how their operations. I know a little bit about their budget. I think one of the goals would be to assure that we have rapid response when there's a line outage. That's been several times this last spring. There's been a difficulty with that. As a rural area resident, I've had power outages longer than what I expected. I've spoken a little bit to the manager and I've spoken a little bit to the other commissioners about that. I think that could be improved and should be improved. I know that the infrastructure needs be replaced. That's a continuing thing, but they've done quite a bit of work the last couple of years. But there needs to be increased capital expenditures on the infrastructure. And I think the third goal probably would be to improve the customer service of the Kitata's PUD.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Next is Mr. Catlin.
Thank you. Probably my first goal right now would be to see if we could get some in-house servicemen and linemen instead of contracting it out. That just doesn't work for a local, small utility as well as the way it was before. We had local people doing local work for the PUD, and right now, we have contractors, outside contractors doing it. That's probably one of my big beefs right now with the PUD. Another goal would be, I think we can add PUD customers. I think there's back, I think, and that would be good for increased revenue. And the third goal is I need to learn what's going on in there, so thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Catlin. Next is Mr. Kelleher.
Thank you, Paul. My first goal would be to share my knowledge with my fellow commissioners as to the FERC process and the procedures and what's involved in competing for a hydroelectric project. My second goal and third goal are things that I have observed and will steal from grant PUD. One is I would suggest that we start having a roundtable discussion before a regular formal meeting to more broadly exchange ideas between the commissioners, have staff reports that are more in detail. They use slide decks. They bring in experts to bring everybody up to speed on the subject they're talking about. And the third thing is if you go Google grant and go up their website, you can review their meeting, whether it's today that they're meeting or any of their previous meetings. And you can go through their agenda. You can go through their staff reports. You can go through their slide decks. And then you can actually listen to their meeting. So I have been able to stay informed with grant PUD more than my past attendance at Kitata's PUD. I've searched the Kitata's PUD website for minutes. There's minutes missing for the December meeting where they raised the manager. They did the motion to raise the manager's salary. I'd like to know about that. It just was really tough to get a handle as to what was going on. They called a special meeting for the lineman. They spoke in the open forum. There's no record of it. There's nothing. I can't hear what they said. And so I want the consumer, if they want to know, they just need to click and get up to speed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelleher. Next is Mr. Morris.
Well, first of all, I think coming into an organization new, the very first and most important thing is to learn. To learn the processes, to learn the procedures that happen in the PUD. Not come in with guns ablazing, thinking you're going to change the world without learning the processes. The first three things that I would like to address is the service. The service of time outage, I think, is definitely something that needs improved at the PUD. The second would be addressing the aging infrastructure. The infrastructure of the Kitata County PUD, for the most part, is old, in the 50s and 60s. I would like to have a plan to address changing or updating the infrastructure that we have. And the third is to build a plan for growth. We have a unique opportunity at the PUD to expand our growth exponentially, and I would like to be able to build a plan to expand the PUD's customer space. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. And finally, Mr. Henderson?
Almost started talking. So I have concerns with the contracting also. You know, I've been, with the Department of Transportation, that was an ongoing issue, and there was many agencies that had done that. And I'm not convinced that's the right way to operate. I think there's some issues with ownership, and the cost is always presented as a cost savings. But usually what happens is in several years, because of admin costs and all the others associated, pretty soon those costs become essentially the same. So that's one. Public service has already been mentioned. The outage issue is a little troubling, and I wonder how much of that is the contracting versus a lack of alignment. But I also have some concerns with the website. I think it's a little clunky. That's kind of small, but that's a piece of it. And the final is really getting to know the staff and understanding the complete organization. You know, the budgeting and some of that, I've looked at. That seems relatively straightforward. But knowing the personalities and the people involved would be beneficial. Thank you.
Mr. Henderson? All right, let's move on to the next question. And I believe, Mr. Catlin, you're first this time. In 2019, the Washington State Legislature passed and grossed second substitute Senate Bill 5116, also known as the 100% Clean Electricity Bill. The bill requires that all retail sales of electricity to Washington State retail electric customers be greenhouse gas neutral by January 1st of 2030. It further requires that all sales of electricity to retail electric customers be from non-emitting generation and from renewable resources by January 1st of 2045. If a provider does not comply with these mandates, it must pay significant penalties. How will you assure that Kitata's PUD will meet these Washington State energy policy requirements? And can you do so without significantly increasing rates?
Well, first, I would say that Columbia River is a renewable source, but that's a different matter. The solar is going to be, is a big deal. I don't, wind generation for the last two months would have been a great deal here. To tell the truth, I do not know what the answer, other than I think the dams are renewable. So that's my answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Catlin. Mr. Kelleher, you're next.
Thank you, Paul. That's my program, to go after a hydropower dam, to go after Rock Island, which would solve it for Kitata's PUD. There's a lot that goes into this renewable goal. There's a lot that goes into this renewable goal. What are you going to do with the baseload that your thermal nuclear plant is providing for the state? That's a very important role it plays. But as to filling it for Kidittas PUD, competing for the license, we'll do that. We're a preference customer of the BPA. We get our Tier 1 power from them, we will probably also get our Tier 2 power from them. So if we maintain the status quo, we're going to be at the end of the whip. We're going to basically be taking what BPA provides. To develop our own, we just don't have the capital base. Now, to compete for a dam, which kind of sounds weird for someone that says he wants to go after a dam, but you need to look into, if we win, the purchase price of that dam is book value, which is awful cheap. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelleher. Next is Mr. Morris.
I guess at first, as I said at my previous question, is time to learn about the organization and time to learn about renewal, renewable energy and what our future faces with renewable energy. As we build our infrastructure, possibly solar, possibly wind included in our infrastructure, is hydro renewable energy? It appears, it seems, pretty logical it is, but in other avenues, it seems like the government doesn't want to accept hydroelectricity as renewable energy. I definitely need to educate myself on renewable energy and learn, this isn't going away, and we need to learn how to embrace the renewable energy and be able to still offer our customers power at affordable rates. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Next is Mr. Henderson.
Well, this is a complex issue and certainly I'm not going to sit here and pretend that I can answer and know how to get there. What I can say is because it's a complex issue and because it's long-term, it's still out in the future, there is time to figure that out. You know, what that looks like may vary significantly. Technology continues to change the way we do business and what we see daily. It's quite possible this may be a minor issue in 10 years. But with that said, we need a, we need a plan, we need to figure it out. While I don't have the answers, you know, part of it is learning what the options are. That's really dissecting that problem and really figuring out what are the core issues and how do we get there? And, you know, it doesn't matter what we're doing, the bottom line is we have to watch and keep our pricing competitive. This is one influence, but it's not the only one. So I would be inclined to say this would be on the docket, it's going to take some study, it's going to take some research, it's going to take a plan, and it's going to take a changing dynamic plan that as we move along, we get new technologies or old technology changes that we can fluctuate with it. And it's very possible, as the others have mentioned, that somewhere down the road, someone's going to change the designation for hydropower also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. And finally, Mr. Mitchell.
Well, I share several of the candidates' frustration about the Clean Energy Act and I think most of us that grew up in Eastern Washington and lived with, next to the Columbia River and have been to Revelstoke and seen the hundreds of feet of snow that start the Columbia River every year, consider the river a renewable resource, and I think we should. But the fact of the matter is the act does not include hydro as renewable resource at this time. And so, so again, Grand Rock Island Dam, which is hydroelectric power, is probably not the long-term answer. Right now we get 98% of our power from BPA and that's hydropower. I think there's a little bit of wind power thrown in and a little bit of actually nuclear, I think, I read that in the, in the handout. But right now, the dams or the hydroelectric power, I think would make the Clean Water Act mandate, but not the renewable resource. So that's, in my opinion, that's not a viable solution. As far as the Rock Island Dam being worth just face value, Shalane County has presented a proposal to FERC for $600 million worth of improvements funded, that FERC has already accepted as a reasonable part of their bid, at least allowed that to be part of their bid when they actually make the bid. Again, I know that's talked about 40,000 residents, we do have 40,000 residents, but we have 4,600 PUD customers, that's the math. So anyway, I guess my, we have to look at every option and that includes solar, that includes wind power, that probably some other things that we haven't explored yet. Nobody talks about nuclear anymore, but it's still the most dependable and probably the most efficient source of electric generation that there is. So we look at all those options, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Would you have a 30-second rebuttal from Mr. Keller?
Yeah, as part of the, that act, they said existing hydro was not renewable, but new hydro is renewable. So what happened at Grant, when they put in new turbines, they produced more power so that marginal increase in power became renewable energy and very valuable. And I appreciate Ron mentioning that Shalane is refurbishing Rock Island for us because that's going to produce that marginal renewable energy that we'll be using and selling like they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelleher. Okay, let's move on to our next question. The COVID-19 pandemic, it's impacting everyone and every organization and the Kidittas PUD is certainly no different. One thing that's been exposed by the pandemic in many different ways is that many residents of our state still do not have access to high-quality, reliable broadband service. This has impacted the ability for people to communicate, for organizations to conduct business, and it's one of the reasons people point to that is a significant hurdle for students. This issue is especially acute in rural areas and is part of the discussion when considering equity and social justice issues. In some areas of state, PUDs have become utility providers in their service areas for rural broadband. Do you think that is a possibility or option for Kidittas PUD? Mr. Kelleher, you're first this time.
Thank you, Paul. I would be very cautious to expand into broadband for Kidittas PUD. We don't have the customer base. I would have the individual that pushes it Google, Don Goddard, who was the Grant PUD manager that was terminated over a broadband scheme that was between Grant and Benton REA. I saw another manager replaced over there during the time I've observed it. It's a very expensive project. If you have a hydroelectric project, you can dump that kind of money into it. If you're trying to trim trees and replace poles, you probably don't have the capital funds to devote to broadband expansion or to take advantage of one of the four things that PUDs can do: water, sewer, electric, and wholesale telecommunications. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelleher. Mr. Morris, you're next.
You know, I believe this is another point, that the time and effort of researching to look into the feasibility of this is something that the PUD needs to do. The PUD needs to continually look at products to offer its customers, to give the customers the best value for their dollar. Is this a product that the PUD should get into? I think it's something that definitely should be researched. Other PUDs offer broadband, they offer water. Is it something Kidittas County could get into? Possibly, but I think the time, I think we owe it to ourselves to research that and see. To be able to come up with the yes we should or no we shouldn't, I think is naive until you spend the time and research to see if it is a viable option to offer our customers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Mr. Henderson, you're next.
Again, this is turned into, as you noted, a significant issue with the broadband, especially where we're trying to educate at home and work from home. I, I believe that we explore these options. I believe that's our role as a commission is to reach out and go places that maybe we aren't always comfortable. That doesn't mean that something happens, but to sit here and go, well, that may not work, before you've really dove into it and looked into it, I don't think that's the right place to be. I think leadership needs to take this and, and look into it. A lot of times you can partner with someone to be effective in putting together a program as large as this, or there, a lot of times there's alternate funding sources. So I believe it certainly warrants exploring. That doesn't mean it necessarily works. Again, this PUD is relatively small, resources, you know, are not what some of the larger ones have, but it certainly warrants some attention and would warrant a look. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Mr. Mitchell.
Well, first of all, that's a, that's a great question and I think Mr. Kelleher answered it very well. I think everybody else has contributed and answered it very well. It just so happens I have an appointment, I have a house in Lake Shalane and I have an appointment tomorrow morning to meet with the installer to install Wi-Fi to my house. And he's a, I called Shalane PUD to get that, make that appointment. So I asked one of our local PUD commissioners, I said, why don't we offer that service? And it came back to that simple math again, we have 4,600 customers. Shalane has, county has, or Shalane PUD has the city of Shalane as well as all the surrounding areas. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't always look at providing a better service at a reasonable cost, and that's really what it comes down to. At this time, it would be almost impossible to provide broadband to our, the customer base of 4,600. And I think the geographical area is even more daunting when you think about it, that, you know, we have customers that are in Tianway and Liberty, up at Liberty and all the way down to Rosa Dam and down to Oval Fruit and in Vantage. Again, it's the same thing, 700 miles lines for 4,600 customers, you'll start putting in broadband and I just don't think it pencils out, but I agree with the assessment that we should always look for increasing our service and increasing our revenue and those, that might be an option down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Catlin.
I like what Mr. Mitchell said, the capital investment in broadband is quite high. I agree, we should look into it and see, but I think the, I think fiscally, it's almost impossible for this size of PUD to handle. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Catlin. Well, gentlemen, we haven't even gotten halfway through the list and I know to you, probably like to me, it feels like we're just getting warmed up. However, that's all the time we have for you tonight, we have to move on to the other, the other open offices that folks will be seeing on their ballot shortly. So we're going to now move to the closing statements. Mr. Morris, you will go first. 90 seconds, please.
Thank you, Kidittas County Chamber, Paul, all the volunteers and the staff at Kidittas County Chamber for hosting tonight's virtual forum. I believe I can be an asset to the Kidittas County PUD's current team and I am extremely honored to be able to be running for the PUD Commissioner, position one. The PUD has such a unique opportunity to have the ability to serve the residents of Kidittas County with their needs. To accomplish continued growth and be able to reach more potential customers, of course, will come with some challenges. The aging infrastructure needs to be repaired and replaced, as well as new infrastructure needs to be added. The challenge of this, the challenge of attaining this task while maintaining a solid, balanced budget, especially in the times we find ourselves amidst the COVID-19 pandemic, will be a daunting task, to say the least. I believe I can bring my years of professional experience in building teams to create results of teaching people to, to reach their own goals and the goals of a team and to use their personal traits to benefit the team as well. Along with years of working with various community organizations, we'll be able to work together to face the challenges that lie ahead. The PUD has many outstanding and talented team members and I'm very excited and hopefully have the opportunity to come alongside them as we head into the future. Again, thank you, Kidittas County Chamber staff and volunteers that made this possible and for giving me the opportunity to attend tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Next we'll have Mr. Henderson.
Thank you. You know, again, our mission is to deliver safe, reliable power at a reasonable cost. And I think I fit that mode very well. I also bring some leadership and forward thinking. With my managerial time with the Department of Transportation, we were looked at throughout the state as leaders in our fields. One of the crews that I supervised was our Signal Electric Crew, so I have electrical background. This is not a foreign place for me, but I do see a need for some real work on where we're headed and how we get there. And I think I can contribute to that substantially. I'm not a foreigner to public service, as I said, I did around 20 years with the Department of Health and that was the last aid, again, on commissions. I'm familiar with working in a commission setting and dealing with other folks. So again, I feel like this is a pretty easy fit for me and I could bring myself up to speed very quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Next we have Mr. Mitchell.
I felt strongly enough about the value of Kidittas PUD that I interviewed for this same position 25 years ago when Paul Rogers was appointed at that time before he had to run for reelection. And I appreciate that Mr. Kelleher has run also for this position, he obviously has shown interest in that. I think all five of these candidates, and myself included, are qualified for the job. I don't think anybody's basically candidate because they need a job or they need money. I know I, I'm sure most of them didn't know, I didn't know there was compensation for the job, but we're in it basically to, for community service and to do something that we all think we can do a good job of. I've remained interested in the Kidittas PUD over those last 25 years and I truly believe it is now currently operating at a level of efficiency and fiscal responsibility better than it has in most of the previous years. I've served on volunteer boards with Commissioner O'Leary and Commissioner Robot and I've worked with, hand in hand with the CFO of PUD, Janine Pratt, and I have a great respect for these people. However, if I was elected, I would, I wouldn't have no problem challenging them if we disagreed on anything. If you view the Kidittas PUD as a swamp right now, then I'm probably not your guy because I don't believe that this is a swamp. In closing, I believe my education, my many years of operating a successful business and participation in many volunteer boards best qualifies me to be your Kidittas PUD District One Commissioner. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Next we'll hear from Mr. Catlin.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to meet with you and share my ideas. Being a lifelong resident at Kidittas County, I want what's best for our valley and with my experience as an electrician and business owner, I really do feel I'd be an asset on the board for PUD Commissioner. I would be honored to have your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Catlin. And then finally, Mr. Kelleher.
Thank you, Paul. We're all in this together and when I say all of us, I mean the 20,000 customers of Peget Sound Electric, a private electric company, the 900 customers of Peget Sound Electric, a private electric company, the 9,000 customers of Ellensburg, city of Ellensburg, and the 4,000 customers of Kitata PUD. We all have three things in common. We love living in the Kitata County and have made that choice to live here. We pay three times the electrical rate of our neighbor in Shalan. And we are all owners of Kitata PUD. That's why you're going to vote. So when you look at your choice to vote, I'm asking you to vote your pocketbook. I want to lower the rates for everybody in Kitata County. We're going after a dam. I'm not making a secret of it. And I need your vote. I need your mandate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. So that concludes the forum with our PUD Commissioners. All five of you gentlemen, we appreciate you joining us this evening, and we wish you good luck as you move forward. We're now going to move on to our county commissioner candidates. We have two different positions that we'll be meeting with this evening and having some discussions with, and that's our Commissioner District One candidates and our Commissioner District Two candidates. We're going to start with our Commissioner District One candidates. I see that we have Mr. Wright joining us this evening and Ms. Ashley. We will begin with two-minute opening statements, and I believe we're going to start with Ms. Ashley. Whenever you're ready.
I have to unmute myself. Okay, excellent. Hello, my name is Kristen Ashley, and I'm asking you to vote for me to represent you as Kitata County Commissioner, District One. This is my home, and I'm qualified and energized to serve you in this role. I was raised in the valley and learned in the public school district. I enlisted in the active duty army as a medic in 2004, at the age of 19, because my credit, of my gratitude to be born as a United States citizen. I was deployed to Iraq from 2006 to 2007. The army enhanced my skills to lead from the front, adapt quickly and effectively when presented with new information, and communicate with clarity with, to my team to accomplish common objectives. After the army, I earned a double major in global wine studies and tourism management from Central Washington University, summa cum laude. My education has prepared me to support agricultural business, and I understand the importance of diversification, value-added farm products, and direct-to-consumer sales, as well as the overall benefit of agritourism, which connects consumers and voters from the west side with our farmers and ranchers. This will increase awareness and education, and will benefit everyone when new legislation is proposed in Olympia. I believe in representing every person in Kitata County, and I will listen to you. I will defend every resident in their freedom of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and I will work with every stakeholder, defend access to our public lands, conserve our existing farmland, increase the county's economic sustainability, sustainability, which will decrease tax burdens to the residents, and support our small businesses, support the police, and emergency services. Thank you very much for your time, and I look forward to answering all of your questions tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Ashley. Mr. Wright, you're next. Mr. Wright, unmute yourself.
I did it. I did it. Oh, I love Zoom. Thank you, Paul. And thank you to the Kitata County Chamber of Commerce, Central Washington Home Builders Association, and the Kitata County Association of Realtors for this opportunity to discuss the issues most pressing to Kitata County. Two years ago, I was appointed as your District One Commissioner. Last year, the voters overwhelmingly chose to hire me to close out former Commissioner Paul Jewell's term. This year, I am asking for your vote again, to allow me to continue my work through a full four years. Although I am proud of what has been achieved, much remains to be accomplished, and I look forward to completing what I have set out to do. Though it could never have been predicted in any strategic forecast, COVID-19 has become the primary focus of governments across the nation. Kitata County has not escaped this. Through initial response, and now on to mitigation and recovery, your county government will need to be at the top of its game to help us navigate the road back to normalcy. As we face a new future post-pandemic, many new issues will arise around growth, public health, land use, and our ability to succeed economically. My experience, not only as your commissioner, but also through 20 years of managing crisis situations in private business, puts me as your best choice to keep our county moving forward. For generations, Kitata County has answered the call when times were toughest. This period is one of those. My family is proud to have called this area home now for seven generations, and I am honored to serve our citizens, just as my grandfathers and grandmothers did. Although this time may seem difficult, our forbears have seen similar circumstances and came back stronger than ever. I'm confident we will do the same. It, it has been an honor to serve as your county commissioner, and I look forward to fulfilling the task set before me by the voters in 2019. I ask you to support me again on August 4th with your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright, and thank you, candidates, for your opening statements. We're going to jump right into it, so I hope you're prepared. We're going to go in the following order. We'll start with Ms. Ashley, and then we'll follow that with a commissioner, I'm sorry, a question for Mr. Wright, and we'll just switch back and forth, okay? Remember, you have two minutes to answer, and if you would like a 30-second rebuttal, you are entitled to one per question. Please just raise your hand or put something in the chat box so that you notify me that you'd like a rebuttal. Again, we'll start with the first question for Ms. Ashley. Ms. Ashley, if elected, what three goals would you like the county to achieve in the first year of your term?
So my first three goals would be to unify our constituents, so all of the people of Kitata County, I would like to bring us together on our common values and goals, and remind ourselves that we are neighbors, so that we can actually have conversations. And then my second goal is to figure out how to manage our community forests that are proposed with all the stakeholders involved, and then also to finance our airport development so that we can get the economic engine moving. So those are my first three goals.
Thank you, Ms. Ashley. Mr. Wright?
First, considering COVID-19, my, my, my primary goal is to balance the budget come 2020, or excuse me, 2021. We, we still have yet to see what state revenues are going to be. So right now, getting us through this next year is, is, is my primary focus. And that includes employee retention, and that also includes making sure that, that we can provide as many services as we have in the past. My next goal would, would, would be economic recovery, and that is twofold. First off, we, we need to, just as Ms. Ashley said, get the airport going again, and that's something which we've been working on. Right now, we're about to undertake a strategic plan initiative, which is going to be conducted with a, with a professional aviation consultant. This funding was actually achieved as a result of a grant that I worked with our 13th District Legislative Team to get in the 2019 biennial, excuse me, biennial capital budget. And that's now coming to fruition. That, that grant also included runway 725 design. It's now closed. We, we want to get that back open, and that grant's going to, going, going to cover getting that design in place. And it's also going to cover an appraisal of our industrial park properties out there. That is something which, which we need to undertake in order to price ourselves accordingly. And my final goal would be to really focus on making sure that our land use is going to be covered over this same post-COVID period. We, we have a growth model, which I believe is about to be turned on its head. Now, now that folks can, can telecommute permanently for some companies, many people want to live where they play. And I think we need to be focusing right now on how to ensure that our way of life does not become something which we don't recognize with the amount of folks that want to move here. So I believe we, we need to focus on, on maximizing as much buildable inventory as we can with the appropriate transportation, while still maintaining those rural open spaces we all enjoy. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Since you both mentioned the airport, let's talk about that. Recently, Central Washington University announced it was rescinding the admissions of students who had been admitted to the Professional Pilot Program, and that the program's future was uncertain and may even be discontinued. As part of their reasoning, CWU cited ongoing budget deficits for the program and the inability to secure long-term hangar facilities at Bowers Field, the county's airport north of Ellensburg. Issues regarding CWU's flight program, one that was previously considered a standout success and an important program that was unique to Central and important to the air transportation market in the Northwest, if not the entire country, have been ongoing for years. Do you think that CWU's program is important to the future success of the airport? And if so, is there a role for the county in supporting or aiding in the success of that program? Mr. Wright, you'll go first.
Thank you. Well, first, yes, I do think it's, it's an important ingredient in the success of Bowers Field. Our capital improvement program through the FAA is actually predicated on, on, on those operations. They want to ensure that their dollars are being spent at airports, which are, which are strategic, and, and getting the use which mandates those dollars. I do think that, that the, the university should be a part of it. I extend the university the invitation to work with us. And I also know, though, that, that, that our citizens deserve an agreement which is going to be long-lastingly beneficial to both parties. Central originally had a 75-year lease for Flightline acreage out there that began in 1992 at a dollar a year for 25 years. And just recently, that, that up-to-market rate, just about 25 years, is, is two years ago. But that, that land still remains undeveloped, and it's prime flightline territory. I want to see what, what, what they're going to be doing with that. I, I believe that it's a, it's a prime piece of real estate, and we certainly want to get a, have, have them see a, see a, a main hangar built. But we also want to maximize the use of Bowers Field for the entire aviation community and industrial community. That same piece of ground could, could, could also be turned into another fixed base operator, offering services which, which would attract pilots and, and businesses to relocate here. So it's important for us to understand both halves of this, this equation, that the county also needs, needs to see some permanent planning around those assets which are currently held by the university. Now, we do want to see them in some kind of facility there, whether that's, it's, it's, it's the main hangar that's there or a different one. We are willing to step forward to see what the best, what, what the best solution is. But we also recognize as well that the aviation world has been turned upside down by COVID, and right now, the market has been not needing those pilots. So we're going to, going to have to wait this one out. But I look forward to seeing Central move forward with Kitata County.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Ms. Ashley?
Would you mind repeating the question?
Sure. It's kind of a long one. I'm going to try to shorten it a little bit. Do you think that Central's flight program is important to the future success of the airport? And is there a role for the county in supporting or aiding in the success of that program?
I agree with Corey and what he was saying in regard to supporting the university and communications with the university. I think that the county and the university working together in a symbiotic relationship can be beneficial for all of our futures. That being said, I think that our airport is an amazing economic engine that should be supported no matter what. So if the university did decide to pull out, we should still focus on developing our business park south of the airport. That being said, our airport is amazing. It's very important for medevac-ing, and then also any, any kind of medical emergencies, any kind of fire suppression support that we want in our community. And so we need to make sure that our airport is protected. I was talking to Ron Mitchell. He was saying that your vitality of your community is directly tied into your airport success. And so we really do need to focus on making sure that our airport and our business park in our airport is successful so that we can take the tax burden off of our residents. That all culminates to our new airport director, Ben West. He's amazing. He's really trying to bring in new businesses, to maintain our airport, to make it as safe as you can, increase the security, decrease the wildlife from impeding the airport zones. I do believe that we can work together with the university. I have reached out to the university multiple times. I have not heard anything in response. That being said, I've reached out to the community many times, and I've heard a lot in response. So I'm hoping that the university will work with our county to have a symbiotic relationship in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ashley. All right, let's go ahead and shift gears, and Ms. Ashley, you'll get the opportunity to answer this question first this time. A single county commissioner is only one vote on a board of three. To accomplish anything at all, a county commissioner must get at least one other vote. This system requires the board to work very closely together. Describe a situation where you've worked collaboratively with others to achieve a goal, and how that experience will help in your role as county commissioner.
Well, thank you very much for the question. I was in the military, so I've worked very collaboratively with many different individuals and teams in order to accomplish missions throughout my entire military career. That being said, you need to, I believe, if you give people ownership of a situation, they are more willing to step up to the plate and to show their true colors, and to work alongside you, and to show their best selves. And so because of that, I think that leading by example and showing people what you expect of them is the most important role of anything you can do in life. And so I, I think that that is a great example. I, I wish I had more, a specific example, but in, in the military, a great example is we were stacking, and this is so silly, we were stacking conic, or we were stacking cots, and I grabbed four cots at a time, and everybody was only grabbing two cots at a time. And then everybody started grabbing four cots at a time. And then we got all the cots stacked, and we were able to go to breakfast instead of eating MREs. And I know that sounds super silly, but I think leading by example is the way that you can most effectively impact your community and the people around you. And I know that sounds super silly, but just grabbing four cots instead of two cots is an effective way of leading sometimes.
Mr. Wright?
Thank you. Yeah, we actually had a fairly recent one, and it's, it's, it's still ongoing, but it's, hate to drag everybody back to the airport, but it's the Fish Food Bank Shelter, which is currently housed in the former Elmview Building. And that's actually been quite an adventure with, with Fish and, and airport folks, and also fellow commissioners. We, we all came together to discuss it, and I believe I originally did vote, I, no, I believe I did. I voted for it, but, but I, I had significant reservations about the planning of it. And as we move forward, I, I, I continued to, to voice those, those reservations, and Fish did ultimately go in. They have been there. They, they've been, they've been serving the, the community well out of it. But there were some concerns around shelter being out there, specifically, specifically the cold weather shelter. And there was, there, there were accompanying issues around transportation and whether having an overnight shelter at an airport would run, would run afoul of federal aviation administration grant assurance requirements, of which the county, as the airport sponsor, has to follow. Fish has been a great tenant, I will say. They have been a, a big bonus to that airport since they've been there. And we have worked through some issues out there. They now want to get their grant in, and I have, I, I have been working with our fellow commissioners just recently to see how we, we could, we could potentially put, put that together. And this is, this is, this is something of which I, I have come around after the advice of both Commissioner Waxmuth and O'Shaughnessy, that, you know, some, some of my reservations out of, about Fish's future out there and, and, and specific use of that facility were in fact already being, being duplicated by, by other facilities there. And I ultimately withdrew my, my objections. I had, I had no need to, to, to continue to challenge I had no need to continue to challenge it. So with good collaboration, the best solution can come forward, but sometimes it takes a little friction to get there.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Okay, this next question, I believe, is for you to answer first, Mr. Wright, again. The Yakima Basin Integrated Plan was adopted by the state in 2013. It's endorsed by Kitata County and by every city in the county. Most of the major projects of the plan are to occur in Kitata County, and some of them are controversial. The one receiving the most opposition recently has been the Kachis Drought Relief Pumping Plant. It's opposed by property owners and recreators along Lake Kachis in Upper Kitata County. Do you support the Yakima Basin Integrated Plan? Why or why not? And what would you say to the Lake Kachis landowners who oppose the plan?
First off, I unabashedly support the Yakima Basin Integrated Plan. I have been the lead commissioner on this since I came into office. I have worked with multiple stakeholders through the plan to push this forward. In fact, I was part of the contingent that visited Washington, DC, and ultimately got both Representative Newhouse and Representative Schreier to bipartisanly co-sponsor the Yakima portion of the John Dingell Lands Act, which funded the first phase of the integrated plan. It's a huge accomplishment for this county, and we are not only supporting the future of our agriculture with additional water storage, but also with new fisheries that will support the upper county economically and also return some cultural losses to the Yakima Nation that have happened over these many years. It's an incredible group of stakeholders, from the environmental side to local governments to the nation, to industry, too. So I am very proud of it, and I do believe in it. And I do support the Kachis Pumping Plant. This is a part of, it's honestly the same as to the Cleon Pool Raise, which is another big project that has gone in, that is going to specifically support the fish runs for Sakai. That 14,400 acre feet is specifically to keep those fish moving, and there have been property losses there. The same is happening at Lake Kachis. And the integrated plan stakeholders, and specifically Rosa Irrigation District, who is privately financing this, this will not be a taxpayer-funded deal. This is the growers coming together to support a billion-dollar-plus industry, is actively working to mitigate those concerns around lost wells and also fire suppression storage for water. So their concerns are being addressed, and the federal courts recently ruled that their suit was, in fact, not going to be heard. So even the courts have agreed that it's the right move. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Ms. Ashley?
Yes, hello again. So 100% I support the Yakima Basin Integrated Plan. I've talked to Urban Eberhart. He's a leader in the nation in regard to water management, and he really cares about our community. I don't know specifically about the pump situation that you're talking about, but that being said, I would like to talk to your different stakeholders and investors and Urban himself in order to figure out my stance on that. That being said, the Yakima Basin Integrated Plan is restoring riparian zones, is bringing fisheries back to our tributaries. As Corey was saying, it is supporting our trees with native populations of people that we have had treaties with and actually trying to fulfill them, which is a huge step forward in regard to our civilization and the way that we treat people. And then in regard to irrigation, we're still fulfilling our irrigation needs for the $8.4 billion of agricultural products that we produce in our county every year. We are doing a phenomenal job of moving forward. We're actually, our little county is a leader in the nation in regard to water management for western states. We are phenomenal. And so we can keep on moving forward. That being said, we are looking at storage solutions for early water that comes in the form of rainfall instead of snowpack early in the year. And I've talked to Urban Eberhart, and he was talking about possible storage solutions with potential energy in regard to having... Anyway, it's a really beautiful time that we are able to look at and make plans for the future. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ashley. Let's turn away from water for a while and talk about the current emergency crisis that the globe and certainly Kitata County is dealing with. The ongoing COVID-19 pandemic is really like nothing most of us, the vast majority of us, have ever seen or experienced. It's having dramatic impacts on everything from the economy to our everyday lives. It's the reason why we're on Zoom tonight instead of in person, right? Public health staff is on the front lines of this issue every single day, and across the country, we're hearing stories of burnout from overworked public health workers, declining morale as a result of long hours, and even large-scale resignations as a result of the pressure and unfortunately harassment. In many cases, that pressure is being compounded by threats of violence, by upset residents who are also feeling the impacts both socially and financially. How do you think the Kitata County Public Health Department has responded to the COVID-19 emergency? Is there anything you would have done differently? And should the county commissioners be concerned about local public health staff morale and retention? Ms. Ashley, you go first.
That's such a difficult question. I know that there's a lot of unrest about this question. I think that a lot of people have felt unheard throughout this situation, and also that they have not felt that they are responded to appropriately. And so I do feel that although I believe in our leadership in this county, and I think that they have been doing as phenomenal of a job as they possibly can do, and it's a very challenging situation, that communication has been lacking, and the small businesses in particular have felt like they are unheard. And so I think, of course, hindsight is 20/20. I can say that I would have done things completely different, and I would have solutions now that we're in the future. That being said, we're still dealing with this situation, and so we need to come up with plans for the future. We need to all get together, and we need to have a conversation about what a healthy future can look like, and we need to move forward. We need to include stakeholders and representatives from different industries in our county. We need to have the health board representatives. We need to have our county commissioners. And we need to just come up with a plan of how we will present a plan that is effective for being healthy for the future to our state. And also, I do believe in having local government be stronger than the overriding government. I think that our county is a beautiful, safe island in the middle of kind of different counties that might manage themselves differently. And that being said, we should be able to determine our future differently than the other counties this round of. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Wright?
Oh, can you repeat the question? Had some moving parts in there. I didn't quite get all of them.
Sure. I'll shorten it for you. How do you think the Kitata County Public Health Department has responded to the COVID-19 emergency? Is there anything you would have done differently? And should county commissioners be concerned about local public health staff morale and retention?
Thank you. First off, how do I think the Public Health Department has responded? I think that, given the amount of foresight they had, given the amount of understanding about a problem which has evolved over the past four months in many different ways, I think they've honestly done a great job. And I have supported them through this. There have been some private disagreements, as any, I think, strong command structure should have, where points are debated behind closed doors, and then we come out and move forward together. But I certainly appreciate what the strain that both Tristan Lamb, our director, and Dr. Mark Larson have been under. And they have put in some very long hours. They have taken on decisions which I think are a lot for anyone to even comprehend. And they certainly, I know, have some things they wish that they would have done differently. There are things that I wish I would have done differently. One of the issues is the incident management team structure. I think that's something which was really developed around natural disasters, fires or floods, where it's designed to be folded in and folded out, but for a long-term public health emergency over many, many months, it has become a bit of an evolving structure, as I think anything through this is going to have to be. And in fact, I would honestly like, the point about communication was one which we started with. How do we communicate better? And it has been a struggle through this, how to keep folks in the loop, given all the different formats out there now, newspapers, social media, everything else, how to hit all of those and still get the information out that's needed to keep people moving forward. But in closing, yes, I support our public health department.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Sticking with the recession, and I think, Mr. Wright, it's your turn to answer this question first. Considering the current crisis, there is a chance that local governments, including counties, will have to find a way to reduce costs. Many counties are already taking steps to make cuts. As county commissioner, will you make budget cuts or try to increase revenues if necessary? If you'll make cuts, what will they be? If you choose to increase revenue, where will it come from?
Well, first off, any business, and the county government is a business in the form of revenue and costs, needs to be looking at both sides of this coin. First off, do cuts need to be made in the face of a recession? Absolutely. We need to look at capital assets, excuse me, capital facility improvements, which are not necessary, how to delay asset purchases, how to prolong asset life cycles. These are all areas where we can cut the budget quickly while also keeping an eye on what those effects are doing for the long term. In terms of revenue, that's going to be something which we can, I don't believe, push back on the taxpayers. This is going to be where we need to make strategic investments in economic development, which means finding people who can do the job of promoting Kitata County and what its attractions are for those businesses on the west side of the state, which I believe right now are heavily looking at how to relocate out of an area that has proven to be a little bit of an unrest zone over these past few months. There's a lot of uncertainty. I think folks are concerned about the being located in these larger population centers, and if they can do the same work in Kitata County, let's figure out a way to make that happen. That also means looking at our land use regulation. What can we do, as I stated earlier, to maintain our rural way of life while expanding economically? Let's make ourselves attractive for business. But that's going to take some reaching out and putting together the plan and investment to get those folks even knowing that we're here, and then tailoring what we have for their businesses. Did you put the "the time is up" sign, Gemma, or 30 seconds? Did I go over that long? Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought I saw 30 seconds. Paul, you can yell for me sooner.
You did. You're good. That was the 30-second sign.
Thank you.
All right. Same question to you, Ms. Ashley.
Okay. Would you mind repeating the question one more time?
Sure. As county commissioner, will you make budget cuts or try to increase revenues? If you'll make cuts, what will they be? If increasing revenue, where will it come from?
Gotcha. Excellent. So from what I've understood from talking to Brett and Laura, already, the county commissioners, they have said that we are pretty conservative in our spending, and so we are not really in a horrible place as a county. That being said, of course, the expenditures that would be cut first would be excessive expenditures, awards, things like that, things that are supplemented with lodging tax, which has suffered most greatly. And then we also, as Corey was saying, Ben Wright, or Ben at the, Ben West at the airport, has been directly talking to investors who are looking to build in our airport and bring business there. And I do think that bringing economic development and larger businesses and supply chain businesses is a great idea in regard to taking tax burden off of our residents. As far as trying to coerce westsiders to live in our county, I think that that needs to be done very, very carefully. I think that our growth management plan is well-raised and well-managed, and that we shouldn't be looking at urban development and affordable accommodation and looking at building smaller residences closer to our urban centers so that they can support our downtown without creating any kind of suburbs. I have also talked to the mayor of Kitata, and he was talking about creating a tourist stop at the exit in Kitata in order to attract more visitors. And then we could bring small businesses into Kitata, and then additional residents into Kitata as well. So I do think that there is a place for growth. I do think that we need to do it very carefully in order to sustain our rural heritage. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ashley. Mr. Wright, 30-second rebuttal?
Yeah, thank you. In regards to throwing our doors open to the westsider population, I want to be clear that we certainly do want to retain our way of life, but we're finding that folks are going to come here whether we want them or not. And it's important to maintain a buildable inventory of land and lots if we want to have our own children being able to afford the ability to live here. And that means examining what those people want to buy, which a lot of times is out in the rural areas, and maximizing those lots while retaining our ag and open spaces. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, well, that's all the time we actually have for District One Commissioners. I know you're as sad as I am to see you go. We're going to move immediately to closing statements. Mr. Wright, you will go first.
Thank you.
90 seconds.
Thank you, Paul. I want to again thank the Kitata County Chamber of Commerce, the Kitata County Association of Realtors, and Central Washington Home Builders Association for this opportunity to discuss the priority issues facing our county. I also want to thank those of you taking the time to view this forum to better educate yourself on the choices before you. This has been an election year unlike any in our lifetimes. Your direct access to candidates has been limited, yet the decision facing our citizens is one of utmost importance. I appreciate that the viewers here are using the platforms available to make the most informed choice. COVID-19 has changed life temporarily, but it hasn't whipped us. Our businesses are hurting. Many of our neighbors are out of work, and we need to get our economy going again. We can recover with the right leadership. Now is a time for experienced guidance that is only built by having lived through making tough business decisions that affect the bottom line. Our county budget needs to reflect the realities facing us, and our government needs to be focused on safely returning our business and lives back to success. I know that I am the right person to navigate this ship through the storm. I know this because I've done it before. In closing, I have an ask for everyone watching. Keep this election positive, no matter what. This can be an incredibly difficult year, or one on which we look back as our finest hour. Kitata County is our home, and we count every one of us, whether we agree politically or not, as neighbors. Thank you for watching. I ask you to cast your vote for me on August 4th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Ms. Ashley, final remarks.
Thank you very much for your time and consideration. This is my home. I have traveled the world, and there is no place on earth that I would rather be, and no place that I would prefer to raise my future family. I was raised here, and I believe that every person in our community works hard to be the very best version of themselves that they can be and do their jobs to the best of their abilities. As I've reached out to organizations, individuals, and interest groups, I've found that in a vast majority of instances, I am right. a vast majority of instances, I am right. Almost every neighbor, from the high-visibility leadership of our irrigation management, which is an example to the nation, to the woman I met in the Safeway in Delhi, who is excited to help me choose the perfect cheese for my picnic, are completely dedicated to their neighbors and being the best version of themselves that they possibly can be. We are all neighbors. I am dedicated to unite us in our community with the goals and values that we have as neighbors. You can ask any person who I have served with in the Army, studied with, or worked with, and they can all tell you that as county commissioner, not only will I step up to the plate, but I will work diligently seeking out opportunities for improvement. If you have more questions for me, I volunteer at the Republican Headquarters every Tuesday from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., and then I will be at the farmer's market this Saturday. I will listen. I ask for you to vote, and I ask for you to vote for me to represent you and serve you as your county commissioner for Kitata County, District One. Thank you very much for your time, and have an amazing evening.
Thank you, Ms. Ashley. And thank you to both of our candidates, Mr. Cory Wright and Ms. Kristin Ashley, for Commissioner District One. We appreciate your time, and thank you for joining us this evening. We will now transition to our District Two Commissioner race, our final race for the evening, and our final race, I think the final local race will be on your ballot this year. We have three candidates, Mr. Jerry Martins, Mrs. Jessica Carricker, and Mrs. Laura Oshatis. Same rules apply, folks, candidates, two-minute opening statements, and then we'll rotate through the questions. I think we started the last time with Mr. Martins, and I think it was Mr. Martins, Mrs. Carricker, and then Commissioner Oshatis. I think we'll go ahead and start this time with Mrs. Carricker. Mrs. Carricker, two-minute opening statement.
Thank you, Paul. You started with me last time, but I'm happy to take the lead. I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce, the Central Washington Home Builders Association, and the Kitata County Association of Realtors for hosting this evening's event. We're living in unprecedented times. Many of us feel like our voices are not being heard. All of us are concerned about the health of our community, not just medical health, but our economic and social health as well. As each day passes, there's a growing divide, similar to the divide that's been around for decades, with upper county feeling unheard at the seat of our local government in Ellensburg. What we are experiencing right now is affecting each of us. We're all enduring the same flood, but we're not all in the same boat. You matter to me. As your county commissioner, I promise to not just react, but to act in the best interest for all, to listen, to honor the oath taken for office, to protect our voice, as we the people of Kitata County, to ensure our freedoms and liberties remain intact while our community remains healthy and safe, not just at the local level, but to fight for it at the state level as well, so that our future generations can continue to grow up in one of the most diverse and unique counties that stretches from the Cascades to the Columbia. As we continue to be one of the five fastest-growing counties in Washington State, our median household income in the county is lower than both Washington State and the United States. As your county commissioner, I will prioritize the much-needed services our county desperately needs. Kitata County is ranked second worst in the state for severe housing problems, while we have rapidly population increase, income inequity, and a massive shortage in health and mental health care providers, not to mention the lack of infrastructure support with the growth in upper Kitata County for education, transportation, affordable housing, and access to retail services. The speed of change is currently outpacing the solutions that we are presenting to the residents that call Kitata County home. It is time we stand united. It is time we, the people, elect a county commissioner who prioritizes individual rights, community health, common sense, reason, and has a backbone to put principles above politics. My name is Jessica Carricker, and I'm running to earn your vote to be your voice as your Kitata County Commissioner, and I look forward to answering your questions this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carricker. Commissioner Oshatis, you're next. Commissioner Oshatis, you need to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Laura Oshatis, and I am running to retain my seat as Kitata County Commissioner for District Number Two. I am a seventh-generation Washingtonian, with my heritage stemming from the farmlands of Eastern Washington to the Evergreen Forest of the Snoqualmie Valley. I also have a very long history of serving our community. In addition to being your commissioner for the last four years, I also served for five years on the Roslyn City Council as a council member. I have served for 12 years as a volunteer firefighter for the Roslyn Fire Department, in which I continue to serve, and have received my red card, which allows me to fight wildfire, and am a board member for the Roslyn Ronald Clealum Heritage Club. I'm going to now speak about a couple of our accomplishments that we've made over the last four years, the first of which is the construction of the covered arena at the Washington State Horse Park. This was built in part by the $1.5 million, which was awarded through Kitata County Lodging Tax Funds. In addition to being awarded the funds through the county, I also advocated heavily at the state level to ensure this project received the additional funding it needed to get off the ground. We changed Kitata County Code where need be. One example of this is when we addressed the Wildland Urban Interface Code. This was done by bringing together a group of stakeholders, which consisted of both the building community as well as the fire community. This resulted in a updated code, which was adopted in an amendment form, which brought together both common sense as well as took into consideration safety for our community. I am asking for your vote, so that over the next four years, we can continue to work on projects such as these, so that together, we can build a better future for our next generations while respecting and preserving our rich past. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Oshatis. Mr. Martins, opening remarks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Jewell. My name is Jerry Martins, and I'm running for County Commissioner, District Two. I want to take time to thank the Chamber, the Central Washington Home Builders, and our Realtors for the opportunity in talking to you about our future. Many of you have an idea of who I am. If not, please visit our website at gerrymartins.org and learn more. Many like you have grown concerned about our current leaderships, and they're talking around issues. We need to address them head-on and find solutions. We are talking about issues that have been facing us for 20 years: growth, our economy, transparency and accessibility, who and what we are as a county. Countrywide, or countywide, traffic is increasing, but the upper county has reached something that must be addressed now. We are now in need, or we're still in need of living wage and stable jobs, and far too many goods and services still come from outside of our community. So what can a commissioner do? They can provide leadership with a plan and vision that results into action. We need to know where we're going so that efforts have direction. We also need to know when to get out of the way. This position doesn't come with a manual like other elected positions. A commissioner hopefully comes with wisdom, knowledge, experience, and enough patience to know when to push, and just as importantly, when to step back. A commissioner must be able to lay the pathway forward while having control of the present, but first and foremost, the job is to facilitate others. I want to serve as your commissioner to make sure our county provides superior customer service while also being accountable for its actions.
Thank you, Mr. Martins. Mr. Martins, I wanted to just mention that it's a little difficult to hear you. So if there's a way that you can hold maybe your microphone a little bit closer as you're answering questions, that could be helpful to the audience.
I will do that.
Okay. Since Mrs. Carricker reminded me that we started with her the last time, and somehow I forgot about that, we're going to go in reverse order today with the questions. We're going to start with Mr. Martins, then Commissioner Oshatis, and then Mrs. Carricker, and then we'll rotate as the questions go by, okay? So let's jump right into it. Mr. Martins, this first question is for you. What specific part of county government will receive more attention if you're elected? And tell us why.
More attention? First off, can you hear me well enough?
Yes, that's much better. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. More attention? I think all parts of the county have to have the equal attention from the county government. There's portions that I bring more expertise and background in than in other parts. The land use, water, economic development. One of the key issues I think we're going to need to be working on early on, as we heard in the PUD Commissioners' race, was broadband service. We've got to figure out how to service all of our county soon. So all of these tie together, and then you've got the transparency and accountability that I think will be better served if we do get broadband across the county. Finally, one of the things that I think that at least the upper county needs is more directed in what exactly we are. We are labeled as a tourist community or a tourist-driven economy. What's that mean? Sun Cadia easily answers the question. So does Snoqualmie Pass. We know where they're coming. How about the rest of the upper county? I think that's where some real focus needs to be given early on, and then we adjust our regulations to support those needs.
Thank you, Mr. Martins. Commissioner Oshatis. You need to unmute yourself, Commissioner.
Same question, I'm assuming?
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you. So, Mr. Martins brings up some interesting points, one of which is the transportation challenges we're facing throughout the county. There are things we are doing as commissioners right now, both short-term and long-term. The short-term is a committee, which is the Upper Kitata County Traffic Committee, which is community-driven, which brings together ideas to the Board of County Commissioners and how to address traffic in their areas. This year alone, we had budgeted a substantial amount of money in order to bring together a group, an engineering group, to give recommendations to this committee. Those recommendations can be then implemented to help and bring calming traffic, traffic calming mechanisms to some of our most, that are most highly impacted. In addition to this, I have been leading the effort here locally to address the need for larger change, which is the need to expand I-90 from four lanes to six lanes in expanding the I-90 East Project. Currently, that project has stopped at Stampede Pass, and my vision and our stakeholders' vision is working with the Ferguson Group and our legislators, both federally and statewide, to bring this project into fruition, which will expand that project to Exit 85, just east of Clealum, and then down just past Ellensburg to the intersection with I-82. So transportation and dealing with growth are two things that we are dealing with currently and planning for larger projects into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mrs. Carricker, same question.
Thank you. I think a great way to answer, actually, I know a great way to answer this question, and you asked if I'm county commissioner, which area of government would see more attention? And I think it clearly states that in the Washington State Constitution, Article One, Section One, that government derives their just people from the governed. And I think that that's the most important thing as county commissioner, is to get out there and to listen to the constituents from Snoqualmie down to the Columbia, from Blewett down into the Yakima River Valley. And we're lacking in that. And we're watching our communities grow exponentially, and we're not listening to the needs that our community members need. We are not meeting infrastructure when it comes to what we offer for community services, for mental health, for schools, for roadways, for sidewalks, for retail space, and ultimately for jobs. We are not providing the services that are needed. So when you ask what part of county government would I focus on, it would be the people. And that's why I'm running. My campaign is for the people, and it's important to me to listen and to talk to folks in Ronald and Roslyn and Easton and Clealum and South Clealum, and everyone down to Kitata in advantage, what needs are not being met of each individual as we see this growth that's exponential right now in our communities with no affordable housing, with one grocery store in, or one full grocery store in Clealum, and not providing the services that we ultimately need. So as far as which area of government, it would be for the people, and I'd be communicating and talking with them on how we can better serve them as their public servants. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carricker. Next question will go to Commissioner Oshatis first. Considering the current pandemic and the ongoing social upheaval, now is the time when we need leaders that will bring people together to support our community and its residents. Tell us about a time when you've brought people together to solve a complex problem, and how you will be the kind of leader we need right now.
That's a great question. Thank you. So there's a couple examples I'm going to give. The first of which I talked a little bit about in my opening statement was there's often, or sometimes, there are conflicting views from different groups within our community. And that involved, in the case of the Wildland Urban Interface Code, the ideas of the fire community as well as the building community. And I am very collaborative by nature. I have a long history of working with others to get the job done. In this case, we brought the groups together to come up with a solution that both were satisfied with, and brought together a better product for the people throughout Kitata County. Another example of that has to do with recreation in upper county. It's been really no secret that there has been some friction between both motorized and non-motorized uses within our communities. Early on, serving on the Tinoa Community Forest Advisory Committee, I brought to the table concerns that people that lived here locally had in regards to the motorized recreation within the community forest. There were other stakeholders that were highly opposed to that, and in the end, what we came up again was another solution, which brought together the motorized users as well as the non-motorized users, and came up with a route through the community forest, which allows for a driving route and picnicking. And ultimately, we came up with a solution where motorized recreation was allowed, when previously, that was not something that many folks saw in the future. So there's a couple of examples. I have many more, but I know my time is now up. I see the sign, so I'll go ahead and end, and thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mrs. Carricker, you're next.
Thank you. So as far as bringing a lot of people together for a complex problem, I haven't had the luxury of being able to do that. For the last over four years, my husband and I have been business partners and also married. And if anyone out there has worked with their spouse 366 days a year, 25 hours a day, eight days a week, you know that those bring their own set of challenges to the table as far as being able to coexist in an atmosphere of being husband and wife, and also being business owners, and being active in the community. With that, ultimately, it's going to go back to, again, listening to the voices in our communities. We are, we do lack in social areas. We lack in just providing services in the community, and leadership comes from listening to the people. And there's a saying that we were blessed with two ears and one mouth. We need to listen twice as much as we speak. And ultimately, there's a reason that we've got committees, that people volunteer at the county level, that they can get involved and get active. There's a lot of empty seats on those committees as well. One of those priorities would be to get those seats filled so that we have more voices in our community, and be able to listen to the concerns and see how we can meet the needs of everybody in our community, not just one single group. And just promote transparency, honesty, and be able to admit when you're wrong, and always agree to disagree, even if you're passionate about that kind of subject that you're talking about. And that's how I would lead as your county commissioner for all social groups, economic groups in our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martins?
Thank you. That, first off, what we're talking about is leadership, and leadership is more than just listening. It is taking the concerns and pushing it to a solution. As far as working with groups, that goes clear back to my days in college over 40 years ago. years ago, where I was selected and led our home, our building construction program out of the University of Washington as the head of their student chapter. From there, I've gone in, I've worked within the home building for, home building industry for 40 years, facilitating quite a few things that have resulted in solutions for what we have faced in. Back earlier, about 15 years ago, I started through the Home, Central Washington Home Builders Association, the Built Green Program, which has now become close to being state law, what we were pushing back in that point. Commissioner O'Shaughnessy brought up the Wildland Urban Interface. I actually, behind the scenes, was working with the home builders to make certain that we brought that to the county and found solutions. What was effective there was bringing in a part of the urban interface code that was left out when it was originally adopted by our county. So, we brought that forward from the Home Builders Association, pushed it through at the county level, and was successful in seeing that as a solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martins. Mrs. Carricker, you have a 30-second rebuttal?
I do. So, Mr. Martins put on his website and on Facebook that he wanted the county commissioners to have an Open Public Meetings Act by some form during the COVID-19 crisis. And multiple times, I reached out to him on Facebook, which you can see, because the Kittittas County People's Coalition had been pushing rallies, had been trying to communicate with the county, and also brought in candidates from all over the state to talk and to communicate. And while I appreciate that he says leadership is more than just listening, it's also having solutions and being able to do something about it, I haven't seen him do anything. I'm hearing conversations of, this is what you would like, but, sorry, time's up, those 30 seconds, but I haven't, I haven't seen him do anything.
Thank you, Mrs. Carricker.
Can I respond to that?
Go ahead, Mr. Martins, 30 seconds.
When you've got a crisis that you're facing, you don't go in and kick the people that are already trying to achieve a solution for it. So, while I may not have been out there on the front lines, I was working closely with a number of different groups, trying to find solutions that we could bring to the commissioners. Doesn't do any good to ask a question if you can't offer a solution. That's what leadership is.
Thank you, Mr. Martins. Okay, let's move on to the next question, and I believe this question goes, why have I lost my place already? Does it go to Mrs. Carricker?
Goes to me. I think it goes to me, Paul.
Well, I think we're going, we want you first, right? And then Commissioner O'Shaughnessy, and now it's Mrs. Carricker. I think we're on the third question. Okay. I'll try to do better and keep track. This is my third group tonight. Okay. Let's shift gears a little bit. Ellensburg City Council recently approved, painting the words "Black Lives Matter" in a permanent display of support for reform on Fifth Avenue, south of City Hall in Ellensburg. Do you think the Board of County Commissioners should approve a permanent display of support for the ongoing demonstrations and social change? Why or why not?
Are we referring to approving and supporting the council's decision, or are we referring to wanting a separate one? Because that's kind of a twofold question there. Could you clarify, please?
It would be a separate.
It would be a separate. That's not something that I would weigh in on. I would want to hear from people. Right now, ultimately, that's the problem that I'm seeing and reading about on every level. I've seen it on both sides of the aisle, is that the conservative side is saying, we don't support this, we don't want this, and then the liberal side saying, a councilman reached out and said that nobody had addressed the council in emails in support of it, it was all negative. You're going to always have unhappy groups, and again, it goes back to making sure that you're listening to the people and you know what they're wanting. I would rather see inclusivity. I would, I would, I would rather know that what we're doing brings the community together, rather than see us divide and continue to have more strife and struggle when that's not unity, that's not, that's not who we are as people in Kittittas County. And so, ultimately, I would give it back to the people, and I would want to know what they wanted, what, how they wanted to see, because I don't want to see any party left out, I don't want to see any social group left out on putting in a permanent monument. My husband's Native American, and that's one of the questions that comes up to me, is that we don't talk about the red lines. We don't talk about in our communities, the missing women and children in those communities because they're a closed-off group. So, by singling out one group that has had struggles that we, that we need to acknowledge, I don't know if that's the answer to the question. I really don't believe it is, but I think we need to be able to listen and be able to come together as a community and find out the best way to meet our needs for the social justice that we've seen around the country, and still support the men and women in blue. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martins?
I agree with Jessica. We see a reaction consistently, and that's been the case for the last 15 to 20 years, where the loudest group seems to get the most attention. I resist reacting. I think we need to be planning. We should be looking at what is evident in our community, and try to have plans in place that address issues that might be coming up. We got mental health, we got substance abuse, we've got, across the boards, we've got all of these issues that we've got to start looking at and taking seriously. I recently talked to our coroner, and he turned around and indicated that our biggest problem right now in the county is substance abuse, and making certain that, you know, they're dealing with more of that than anything else. So, where there are very vocal groups out there that are looking for attention, we've got serious problems we've got to start addressing. And while I want to be sensitive to those groups, we also have to pay attention to what is our pressing problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martins. And just so that you know, something has changed with your microphone, and it's now more difficult to hear you. If there's a way for you to remedy that for the next question?
I will do that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner O'Shaughnessy, same question, please.
Thank you. So, being somebody that's collaborative by nature, it is extremely important to me that, as a commissioner, I build relationships and listen to everyone across Kittittas County. And one of the things that I have been working on, because we all have areas we need to improve, is to continue to grow my network, to expand to additional groups. And I've been wanting to learn more about, I've done research on my own for BLM, or Black Lives Matter, but I want to continue to engage with those groups, as well as other groups across Kittittas County, because there is some unrest on many levels, and we need to continue to work together collaboratively and build bridges. The last thing I want to do is to take any action that would further push our communities apart. So, I think this is something that we need to address, the being inclusive to all groups within our county. I think that's something that I have a history of doing well, but it's always something that I can improve on, and that's something that I look to continue to do into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, next question, I believe, goes to Mr. Martins first this time. Mr. Martins, Governor Inslee recently imposed a mandatory masking order for all residents, went out in public, and one unable to maintain social distancing of six feet, with some exceptions. First of all, do you agree with the order? Second, would you support the sheriff enforcing the order and provide the department with the resources to do so, if requested?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I have serious reservations when the governor does what he does, but I understand his reasoning behind it. My thought process is, is I wish he would talk to his local county health directors and give them a little bit more insight into what is needed in any given area. He has the right to turn around and order the masking. I have talked to many people that have disagreed with that. I have a number of friends that have hearing disorders, and they can't use it, and it has put them at a disadvantage by people expecting them to perform in a way that everybody else is. So you are actually, with the order, dividing, dividing the people, because not everybody can comply with it. I'm 68 years old. I understand my responsibility to me and to my population, or my community, that I should protect myself. That's where I think the order should have went to, making certain that people that are at risk take the necessary means to protect themselves. But to impose their will on everybody across the community, I think is the wrong direction. As far as the sheriff imposing or enforcing his rules, it's state law that that is the case, but I think the sheriff's directive and the direction that he is taking in that education over enforcement was the correct one.
Thank you, Mr. Martins. Commissioner O'Shaughnessy?
Thank you. So this is something that we've been trying to manage as a Board of County Commissioners, and I'd like to state off, or start off by stating that I've been doing what I can as a leader to support our health department in wearing a mask. But I do believe that it is not something that the governor should have mandated. I think that it should be something that is a personal choice. However, I also do, even more so than my displeasure for the masks, support our small businesses. And if keeping our small businesses open means me wearing a mask, I'll wear a mask, because the economic vitality of our community is something that is incredibly important. We saw, and I, you know, I have been criticized for not listening to small business owners. I can say that's not the case. I did, and I had many, very many one-on-one conversations, and they were heartbreaking. And I will do everything in my power to ensure our small businesses can remain economically healthy into the future. In regards to the sheriff's office, we have a very level-headed sheriff. Sheriff Myers has been a great example, and he himself has upheld the law. But in enforcing the law, he has taken the approach to educate people on what the law is, and that is an approach that I think during this very difficult time is the approach we need, because right now is, everybody is in very stressful situations, and we need to continue to bring each other together and unify, rather than further divide us. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mrs. Carricker?
Thank you for the question. So I'm actually going to answer the second part first, in regards to enforcement. Being that the sheriff's office is an elected official, that's not something where I, as county commissioner, would step in and tell that elected official how to run their department. When an elected official takes office, they take an oath of office in Kittittas County, and it reads, "I," the name of the office, "do affirm that I am a citizen of the United States of America and the state of Washington, that I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington, and will, to the best of my judgment, skills, and ability, truly faithfully diligently and impartially perform the duties of the office of XYZ in and for Kittittas County District, so on." So, as far as how I would be as Kittittas County Commissioner to tell the sheriff how to run his department, though, I don't believe it would be my place, ultimately, because that person is elected by the people to represent the people for that department, and that is their department to handle. I do not agree with masking order, and I think mainly because there's a lot of confusion behind it, for everybody. There's been no clear, concise knowledge or information given to the people. And when we see the masking order, we don't, we see a masking order, but what we don't see is that it's threefold. The governor's given an order, LNI has an order for LNI to perform, and then we have an order from the Department of Health, in addition to Governor Inslee's order for LNI to enforce it. It confuses people. People don't understand that LNI will enforce businesses on how they run their employees, but the Health Department is who enforces for people coming in and out. There's a lot of confusion around it, and ultimately, the definition of a proclamation per the governor's website is a proclamation or formal public declarations from governors, often proclamations declare state emergencies or call a legislature into special session. Ultimately, the mask mandate for me is about government compelling businesses to deny services for muddling facts and manipulating words, and I don't believe that it is the governor's position to mandate the private sector. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carricker. Okay, let's stick with the pandemic issue. The recently ended school year was very challenging for many students, staff members, and for their families. The ongoing and currently surging COVID-19 crisis is creating a lot of uncertainty for the next school year. On top of that, childcare options, which were very limited in our county even before the pandemic, are even more scarce today, with little immediate relief in sight. Working families with very young and school-aged children who rely on both parents being employed are being squeezed as a result. As county commissioner, what could you do to help these families? And I believe, Mrs. Carricker, you're going first on this one, is that right? No, I got it wrong again. Commissioner O'Shaughnessy?
Okay, I'm unmuted now. Thank you for this question, and this is one that really hits home for me as a mother that had a son graduate from high school this year, as well as one who's going into sixth grade next year. This is something that we've experienced firsthand. As a commissioner, one of the things that I did early on, so this is very early on, was reaching out to our school districts to see what the school districts need and how the commissioners can assist them with the resources they need to ensure that the children are, the children have the resources they need to be successful. In Kittittas County, and specifically upper county, I'm a little bit more familiar with the Clealum School District. One of the benefits we have is the smaller classroom sizes, as well as the bus routes. There's not as many kids intermingling with one another. So, I am here as a support. We have school board members and superintendents that make very difficult and very hard decisions, but I do, as I had reached out earlier to our community, to our school districts, and reaching out to ask where their resources were lacking, I think that continues to be a role of county commissioner, is to support our school districts and to ensure that our children have all of the resources needed to ensure that they have a successful school year, starting in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Carricker?
Thank you. So, this has, this is definitely not just a concern from COVID-19. Actually, Commissioner O'Shaughnessy happens to be a part of the Kittittas County Community Health Improvement Plan, which is a six-year plan that started in 2018 to 2023. And in that plan, it discusses how we lack with childcare. It is something that we grossly lack. We do not have community activities for people of all ages, and we're seeing it exponentially. I haven't seen what vast improvement on this plan. We're three years into a plan. It discusses the issues that we have socially, economically. It discusses the growth and the poverty level, and it's got plans and an integrated plan to work with community members, but we're not, we're not applying that plan. And we need to be doing so more now than ever. And I've talked about this multiple times, is that community health is more than just medical. It's social and economic, and right now, we could be actively working on preventing And right now, we could be actively working on preventing what's going to happen this fall when school is supposed to go back into session, but the likelihood of it is not going to be full-time, from what the school districts have said. And we're going to wait for it to be an emergency. We're going to wait for there to be a need for us to react instead of act now and be able to prevent what we see coming down the pike ultimately. Metadata needs to be shared, and that's a concern for me just in the entire aspect of how we're handling COVID-19 and cases in Kitatass County. As of today, at 5:21 PM, we have had 2,885 negative tests out of 3,111 tests that have been done. There are 226 confirmed cases of our population. That's 0.004% of Kitatass County that has been infected by COVID-19. I think we need to look really strongly at the metadata and see how we can actually take back control in our own community, in our own county, so we can ensure that we're protecting those that call Kitatass County home. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carricker. Mr. Martins?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I'll let you know if we struggle.
Okay, thank you.
You sound good.
We are looking at what could possibly be our new normal. We don't know what's going to come out of this. It's a clear case that we were hit with something and had to react to it, but we better be planning for it in the future. We don't know where schools are going to be going, but we have to be there to support our elected school officials. They're the ones that are going to make the decisions about the schools. We have to be there to make certain that they can, you know, push their agenda forward. From my end, one of the ways we can do that, the thing that we are lacking the worst in Kitatass County now, is having broadband service that serves our rural Upper County. Actually, our rural county or our entire county. We've got to be looking at the availability that's out there. I know recently, or over the past 20 years, fiber optic has been brought across this county. It's considered a dark network. We've got to figure out ways to access that network and start bringing it into making it usable for our county to provide the broadband service that we need. Could be that we're going to have a lot more homeschooling or schooling from schooling that goes into our homes as the new normal. We don't know. But to not plan is a deficiency that has been happening far too long in this county. Infrastructure is important. Now, mental health and all of the other things are definitely parts of the package. But we, as county commissioners, have got to turn around and make certain the community has the infrastructure in place to make it happen.
Thank you, Mr. Martins. Commissioner O'Shaughnessy, I believe you have a 30-second rebuttal?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of things. In regards to childcare facilities, that is something we continue to work on and continue to try to advocate for. That's something that is done through the Kitatass County Health Network. And also, in regards to the childcare question, Kitatass County Board of Commissioners has, as I stated earlier, ensured that we are working with our school board members, and we have very capable school board members. Early on, there were, and I anticipate this being an option in the future, there was childcare that was offered in the schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mrs. Carricker, you have a 30-second rebuttal?
Thank you. One of the things that I would be using right now with the Ferguson Group that we hired as a county back in April is to be ensuring grants. You talk about having a plan and taking decisive action for what we need in leadership in our county. There is a ton of grants out there that we could be going after to be getting the power in or underground and be getting fiber optics countywide. We wouldn't have to charge our constituents any cost in that. We could be going after grants and ensuring that if this new normal, which is the world's worst word in my world right now, happens this fall, that we can make sure that everyone has access to high-speed internet. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, candidates for Commissioner District Two, that's all the questions that we have time for this evening. In fact, we've gone a little bit over, but I wanted to make sure that you got the same number of questions that the other commissioners received as well. We're going to go ahead and transition right now, then immediately, to closing statements. Closing remarks are limited to 90 seconds, and because you were up next, Mrs. Carricker, we'll start with you.
Well, I want to thank everyone this evening that chimed in and watched. The Chamber of Commerce, the Central Washington Home Builders Association, Kitatass County Association of Realtors, and you, Mr. Jewell, for hosting the event this evening for us. Our county needs elected officials who understand that they are elected to be the voice of the constituents, those that are capable of holding all departments to the highest standards, who will ensure transparency and will never overlook any kind of disengagement of the community by any county employee, especially when tough questions are being asked. We need to strengthen real leadership during unprecedented times. Elected officials that are willing to stand up for our constitutionally protected rights and understand that their powers are inherent of the people who voted them into office. My name is Jessica Carricker, and I'm running to earn your vote as your Kitatass County Commissioner for District Two. Please visit my website at www.kitatasccommissioner.com. Feel free to give me a call on my cell phone, which is listed on the website, and chat with me about how you would like to see our county thrive and come out of this COVID-19 crisis ahead of the game. And there's plenty of events that are happening where you can come and have meet and greets with me in Ronald, Roslyn, Easton, Ellensburg, all over the county. We are out there. Feel free to connect with us. And ultimately, your voice matters to me. I want to hear from you. And I appreciate this evening and having the opportunity to speak. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mrs. Carricker. Mr. Martins, you're next.
Thank you. And thank everybody for watching. Again, I want to thank the chamber, the home builders, and the realtors for putting this together. I would like to thank the home builders for their endorsement, and also the Citizens Alliance for Property Rights for the outstanding rating they provided me as a candidate. Over the next two weeks, the county will decide which two candidates will be sent forward to the general election. Only Laura and myself actually live in the Upper County. As we approach this election, each of you should carefully consider the state of our county and what it might look like with an additional 20,000 residents. Then consider which candidate would be best equipped to guide our county forward, a future where the county continues as a regulator of its citizens over where it becomes a facilitator for its citizens. A facilitator is how I view the commissioner's position, helping you interact with your county government, use your property, and receive public services, to be sure that the funding you expend in taxes and fees are returned through the value received in county services. My pledge, if you elect me, is to make sure the experience you have with your county government is efficient, respectful, and meets your needs. To learn more, go to jerrymartins.org, and please vote for Jerry Martins on August 4th.
Thank you, Mr. Martins. And Commissioner O'Shaughnessy, final words?
Good evening and thank you. I want to remind everyone, my name is Laura O'Shaughnessy, and I am running for reelection to retain my seat as Kitatass County Commissioner for District Number Two. I have both the experience as well as the relationships to get the job done. It is no coincidence that I received over 140 endorsements, not only from our neighbors and friends, but from elected officials in Kitatass County and across the state of Washington. That is why I spearheaded the effort to bring commissioners together from across the state to address our governor's office in regards to COVID-19. This resulted in a strongly worded message, which expressed the need to bring back local control to our local government. This was signed on by 19 of our 39 counties. If you want a leader with a proven track record, has the ability to build bridges, and get the job done, I ask for your vote in this upcoming election to retain me as your Kitatass County Commissioner for District Two. In closing, I'd just like to state that I do have a website, and you're more than welcome to visit it anytime. It's www retanlaura.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Shaughnessy. And thank you to all of our District Two County Commissioner candidates. This concludes our event this evening. I'd like to thank all of our candidates who joined us. We had five PUD commissioners, two District One commissioners, and now three District Two commissioners. And for the voters out there, you should be seeing your ballots really very soon arriving in your mail. And if you don't do anything at all over the next month, make sure you fill out that ballot and deliver it to the courthouse or put it in the mailbox. Make sure that somehow it gets over to our county auditor's office and gets counted. Finally, I just want to say to our candidates, we really appreciate the sacrifice that you're making and the work that it takes to put your name out there and to put yourself on display for everyone to run for county commissioner or for PUD commissioner. Our system wouldn't be what it is without people who are willing to take a risk and willing to put themselves up to public scrutiny. This is not an easy process. It's very, very difficult. And it's not just difficult on you, it's difficult on your spouses, your significant others, and your family members and your friends. Make sure that you thank them from all of us as well. Thank you again, everyone, and good night.